Welcome, everybody. Just so we're all clear on this portion of the evening. This is a public hearing that's set in respect of...
Your worship. I apologize for interrupting. We've got a bit of procedural gymnastics that we need to go through today. So, we have reconvened the special council meeting and we need to have a very short council meeting to make an alteration to Schedule Six that will be appearing before the public hearing. So, I apologize to that...
So, what is... We're not on the notice with the public hearing agenda?
We are right on... We're back to the special council meeting. So, Ms. Jensen is here and able to speak to that alteration. And we anticipate that just being a minute's technicality and then we can move back into the public hearing. So, I apologize for that.
So, the special council meeting that was set for 5:30?
Correct. So, then there was an in-camera meeting and now we've reconvened the special council...
Okay, I have that in front of me. So, we... What we did is at 5:30, there was a special council meeting which was... There was a motion to adjourn to camera. And then, at that point, now we're reconvening that meeting. That was the 5:30 meeting. There's three meetings tonight. And we are now on the portion... We've essentially dealt with number one, which was the moving into camera to do with, as it said there, a position with respect on officer, employee agent, et cetera. And the motion was that we reopen this special meeting at 6:00 P.M., which we're now doing and reconvening. And we have communication with respect to bylaw 4-309-960 Fowl Bay Road, Heritage Designation Bylaw 218, Schedule Six revision. We're on track now. Thank you very much and I apologize for jumping.
So, I would move second reading of bylaw number 4-703-960 Fowl Bay Road be rescinded?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor? Posed? None opposed? Technicality? Check.
That bylaw number 4-703-960 Fowl Bay Road, Heritage Designation Bylaw 2018 be amended by replacing Schedule Six variances to District of Oak Bay bylaw.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Go ahead, please, Counselor Zalco.
Thank you very much, Chair. Is it possible to get a very brief, very brief overview as to what the difference is, please?
Okay. Ms. Jensen.
Yeah, just to clarify, so, within the schedule for the heritage revitalization agreement, Schedule One points to the survey plan prepared as part of the document. On that survey plan, it does list out the lot sizes that are proposed. Just to further clarify the document, those lot sizes have now been incorporated at the very top part of Schedule Six.
Thank you very much. So, we have a motion to amend it by adding... Replacing Schedule Six. Okay? Any further discussion? All in favor? Posed? None opposed? Thank you very much. And now, part three of that.
Bylaw 4-703 be given second reading.
Okay. Second? Was this moved and seconded? Discussion. Seeing none, call a question. All in favor? Okay. Those are the technicalities out of the way. I think we're at this point then motion to recess and convene the public hearing. Okay? Moved and seconded. Discussion about that. All in favor? Posed? None opposed? Thank you. Now, we're on the public hearing, having dealt with those technicalities. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. And I call the meeting to order and I start by acknowledging that we're gathering on the traditional territories of the Coast and Strait Salish peoples. Specifically, we recognize the Lakewongan-speaking people who are known today as Osongies and the Asquymult and that their historic connection continues to this day. I also advise the audience that you are being recorded. This is livestreamed and also recorded for our archives on the municipal website. So, thank you very much. And now, I welcome everyone to the public meeting. I don't have to introduce myself, but I will again in case some of you don't know. I'm the mayor and this is the council. I'm Nils Jensen. So, there are two bylaws before us tonight. Bylaw 4-703 and 4-704. And they relate to a heritage designation and a heritage revitalization agreement for an address at 960 Fowl Bay Road. The bylaws will be introduced in a little more detail by our district staff, Ms. Jensen, in just a moment. And just so you know, we have given initial readings to the bylaws and, of course, we just corrected one a few minutes ago and prior to this public hearing. And we will hear a summary of the bylaws as amended. And then, at that point, I'll invite the applicant to make a presentation following that. And after hearing from the applicant, I will open the floor to anyone who wishes to address us on the proposed bylaws. And you will be asked to provide your names and your municipality. And we also ask you to just to write those down on the little podium there where... So, we can get the right spelling. This is a public hearing and it has a certain set process which is directed to be followed by provincial legislation. But it is an opportunity for everyone to express their view and for our council here to listen. We come here with an open mind. This hasn't been... Even though it's been dealt with before, it hasn't been decided upon and we're seeking that input today. There's no prejudging going along. Now, it does... It is a little bit... A public hearing is not a question and answer. It's not as interactive as a committee of the whole, for instance. So... But it is an opportunity for you to speak your minds about the issue, but not to debate the merits back and forth like perhaps we do at the committee of the whole. So, try to, well, focus on the proposed bylaw when you're speaking, please. Be as concise as possible and be as respectful of others, particularly when it comes to cheering from one side or the other. That's not helpful and it kind of intimidates people who might have a different view from coming forward. So, the... There's no clapping and cheering, please, if you don't mind. So, I think that's it. We're going to follow a set procedure which involves receiving the correspondence and also reading any late correspondence. So, and I should also note that if you have received an acknowledgement from our staff that you've written a letter, then it'll... It's included in our package tonight and you don't really need to read it over again. You can add to it and highlight it. So, once we're finished receiving the information tonight, we're going to go very quickly at seven o'clock into the council chambers... Council meeting, I should say, and to deal with the bylaws. And between ending one and starting the other, the law doesn't allow us to receive any newer information outside these chambers. So, thank you very much. I look forward to your cooperation now, Ms. Jensen. I'm going to call upon you, please, to introduce the bylaws and give us a bit of a summary and context for what these are. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. The item on this evening's agenda is bylaw number 4-703, which is the bylaw to consider a heritage designation for 960 Fowl Bay Road. The existing home at this address was designed by Samuel McClure and constructed in 1914. The Lawson residence is characteristic of an Edwardian Tudor revival style with its prominent half-timbering masonry foundations, ornate chimneys, and sleeping porch. The process to designate this home is running concurrently with bylaw number 4-704, a bylaw to enter into a heritage revitalization agreement for the same property. This agreement, if adopted, would remove... Would move and retain the residence at the northeast corner of the site and require exterior restoration and maintenance of the home. It would also facilitate a four-lot subdivision of the entire site with one single-family dwelling located on each proposed lot. Through the revitalization agreement, the zoning bylaw requirements would also be relaxed for minimum parcel sizes for three of the lots and for heights, rear lot line setback, floor area ratio, paved surface, and parking requirements for the existing home moved to the corner lot. It would also allow for two secondary suites within that existing home. Given that bylaws 4-703 and 4-704 are running concurrently, it may be appropriate for council to receive input from the community on both these bylaws at the same time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jensen. So, that's the first step. And the next step is for us to receive the written submissions that we have received here at Municipal Hall and distributed prior to the public hearing.
Move, receive?
Moved, seconded. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much. Now, there's also written submissions to February 26th, not previously distributed prior to council members to be received. Item number three... I think there's only one that I can see there. We need to receive that.
Move, receive. Second.
And that's the presentation for the applicant. Moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor? Posed? None opposed? Now, the fourth step here is to find out if there's any correspondence which has not previously been distributed. And if there is, we would require it to be read out in these... In this hearing. Is there any such correspondence?
I know, your worship.
Thank you very much. And now, I'm going to invite the applicant who I see here. Mr. Dewhurst, welcome. And following the applicant's presentation of the proposal, which I think looks... Is there going to be a PowerPoint or...
Yeah, a short one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And then, I will invite speakers to come to the microphone. Thank you very much. Mr. Dewhurst, you have the floor.
Thank you. And good evening and I hope you'll apologize... I accept my apology. I'm just getting over a bit of a bug. I think probably everybody either has it or has had it. Is this...
Thank you, Hazel.
I'm not sure if I can, but I'm going to try. Uh-oh. Now, I screwed it up really bad. We need the expert.
Not that you're not an expert.
I can see why.
Now, you have the floor.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. My name is Stacy Dewhurst and I'm the owner of Dewhurst Developments and 960 Fowl Bay Road. Can you hear me okay? For the last 25 years, I've been retaining and restoring important heritage properties in Victoria while adding sensible, affordable density to our established neighborhoods. There we go. I'm very excited about the Lawson residence at 960 Fowl Bay Road as this property offers a unique opportunity to save, restore, register, and designate a significant heritage property while at the same time adding three modest, single-family homes which we all know the area desperately needs. With almost an acre of land at the corner of Brighton and Fowl Bay, there is more than enough land to sensitively add these homes without negatively impacting the surrounding neighbors. This is a great shot of the Lawson residence when it was first completed, designed and built by noted architect Samuel McClure in 1914. We have submitted a 37-page heritage conservation plan by Donald Luxton which clearly identifies the heritage value in preserving this important property. Now, here we go. Now, this is a great pic that we sort of discovered while we were going through the process here. And it's one of my favorites and I believe this shows Mrs. Lawson herself relaxing with her dog in the front yard of the property. And you can see that small branch that's just above her is now a towering majestic oak tree. And that was an oak tree that we were looking at losing in our first proposal, but it's an oak tree that we're now going to be saving. So, here's a photo of how the home appears today. The sense of history that surrounds this home, both inside and outside when you go through it, is what drew me to this project in the first place. I mean, there's a tremendous sense of history when you get to go through one of these homes that has not been altered over time. It's still in its single-family condition. As an Oak Bay resident, I'm passionate about our neighborhoods. Obviously, this is what I do. I'm committed through my work to protecting and preserving important homes like this one. As for the project itself, our original plan was to create four additional lots in conjunction with relocating this home to the front corner of the property. Excuse me. After consultation with the surrounding neighbors, reviewing the comments from the Heritage Commission, and attending our first committee of the whole meeting, it was clear there were concerns about too much density. So, we listened carefully to those comments. We went back to the drawing board and we substantially altered our plan. To address those concerns, we eliminated one of the proposed new lots and we then placed a heritage mansion on a substantially larger lot. That was a big concern with the first proposal. So, this slide shows our revised proposal with a much less dense use of this site with the Heritage Mansion on an estate-sized lot with five off-street parking spots and the three new homes on large lots consistent with other properties in the area. This plan puts only one tree at risk and preserves substantially more green space than before. And there's more than enough off-street parking for vehicles and we will meet or exceed the canopy requirement... Requirements of the bylaw as far as the trees go. Now, this next slide is a great slide. This shows an aerial view of the area with our superimposed site plan. You can see there is substantially more green space and less density on our site than many of the surrounding properties. And I think this really does demonstrate how nicely this fits into the area. And I don't have a pointer, but if you look immediately left of my image there, you'll see those three homes that back onto us from Brighton and you'll see the type of density that exists there. And I'm talking about the home size relative to the lot size. And also, north of us on the left side, you'll see three more homes. There's a lot of density in that area already and our site is probably the least dense of all of them. And I think the shot... Slide really... Really illuminates that. Okay, this is a great slide. I am a firm believer in community engagement. I've built my career on that. I don't just talk about it, I do it. And in this case, we've spent 15 months sharing our plans with the community and our immediate neighbors. I've met in person with all of these neighbors, for the most part, three or four times. I've kept in touch with them through email and phone calls. Now, the lots there with the green dots indicate property owners that have met with me and have signed a letter of support for the project. Now, if you just go above our site there and just to the left, you'll see that address, 2002, I think it is. I've met with those people. I've shown them the plans. They've said to me, "We think it looks great." They're not signing a letter. The home immediately to the left of that, no one has ever been at that home and nobody has ever been on the bottom-left corner at 979 either. And I'm talking about multiple visits. So, I'm not sure if those homes are occupied or not, but I sure tried. And then, this home immediately to the right of us at the bottom, 951, is the same situation. I've never seen anybody home there. Now, we do have one neighbor immediately to the left of us at the corner there that have expressed concerns about loss of sunlight, overshadowing, and loss of privacy. Now, as a guy who's had a development go in next to me, I get that and I understand that and I take those concerns seriously and we've made a number of changes and adjustments to try to earn their support. As an example, if I can go back one, here. So, I'm talking about our lot there on the right side. I'm talking about the home immediately to the right of that. So, what we've done is we've created a 15-foot side yard setback from our shared property line for our new house. And in conjunction with their existing 25-foot setback, there will be at least 40 feet between the two homes, almost the width of a full city lot. Our new house will not be more than 22 feet high to the underside of the top-floor gutters, ensuring there will be no overlooking of their home. There will be no unprotected openings in principal rooms that will overlook their home. There will be no driveway permitted down the side yard and no garage or parking in the rear to preserve their green space and privacy. We've oriented our new driveway to be as far away from their property as possible. We've designed more than enough off-street parking. And finally, we commissioned a sunshade study from a firm in Vancouver which I shared with the owners, which unequivocally shows that at no time during the year will there be any overshadowing or loss of sunlight. So, it's come up in previous council meetings about these types of projects where the conversation revolves around community amenities. And so, for the most part, with a heritage revitalization agreement, my understanding is the main community amenity is the restoration, retention, and designation of the home itself. And of course, we're doing that. In addition to that, we are restoring the exterior of the home, including the landscaping. We are doing a complete new sidewalk, curb, gutter, and landscaped boulevard down the entire Brighton Street frontage, which, I have to say, is a major community benefit because right now, it does not look good. It's not safe for pedestrians, people with baby carriages, cyclists, or even motorists. So, this will tremendously enhance not only the viewscape as we come off of the avenue heading into South Oak Bay, it's going to present itself as the gateway to South Oak Bay, but it's also going to be safer and a benefit for everybody. I've talked about wanting to put a park bench in at the Brighton Corner, which I intend to do by the crosswalk. So, as people do use that walking corridor, they can stop for a minute. They can tie up their shoes, they can just take a breather. And I'm going to build a small rock cairn with a plaque on it which tells the story of this home. So, when you... This home is going to come out of nowhere. It's just going to be fantastic. And when people stop, they're going to be able to read a few details about the Lawson residence. So, that's a community amenity. I think all these amenities that are off-property are real community amenities. Additionally, of course, I mentioned we're going to be planting some new trees to comply with the canopy cover. And all the storm sewer water upgrades and site servicing, of course, come at developers' cost. I was at a meeting a couple of weeks ago where a member of the public spoke and somehow that... It sounded like it was going to be the municipality's responsibility. That's our responsibility. So, in conclusion, I'd like to say that when this project's complete, the restoration, retention, registration, and designation of the house, along with the addition of these three new family homes, is going to be a win-win for the district, for the community, and for our surrounding neighborhood. This is a legacy project for myself and Dewhurst Developments. It's a very high-profile location. It comes complete with a high degree of reputational risk. In this city, your reputation is everything. And so, I'm giving you my personal commitment that I will deliver on all of my promises, I'll exceed your expectations, and I'm not going to let you down. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Dewhurst. Now, we turn to the portion where I invite speakers to come to the microphone, remind you, please state your name, your municipality, and then just note that down on the podium form. And I ask three times, and this will be the first time. And there's no... There's no time limit, but we ask you just to be focused and concise. Thank you very much. So, first speaker, please. All right. I call a second time. Oh, there we go. Okay.
My name is Lauren Sivertson. I live in Oak Bay and Victoria. I thank you for informing us of this meeting and allowing me to provide some comments on the issue before you. And we live at 985 Brighton Crescent, which is adjacent to the 960 Fowl Bay property. While our property is in part in Victoria, it is also in Oak Bay where we vote and pay taxes. I spoke on the 960 Fowl Bay redevelopment project when this council considered it back on September the 18th, 2017. At that time, I expressed general support for the plan as it then existed, being better than the current state of the disrepair of the rooming house on the property. But we noted... I noted some concerns. During that was the revised plan. The revised plan of Dewhurst Developments has addressed most of our earlier concerns, in particular with respect to the space and siting of the to-be-restored McClure home, the reduction in the number of new homes from four to three, the expanded setback on one of the properties, new properties, better provisions for parking, the boulevard and the sidewalk commitment for Brighton Avenue, and the commitment that all of the homes on the 960 property will be single-family residences with no provision for suites in the new houses and the McClure home to be limited to provision for two basement suites only. With respect to consultation, we have met with Stacy Dewhurst and exchanged calls and emails on the project since late 2016. Mr. Dewhurst has listened to our concerns, provided information, and made a number of commitments to us with respect to the project. We believe this has been beneficial for both sides and the adjacent community as well. And I'll underline that. On July the 11th, 2017, Lauren and Gloria Sivertson of 985 Brighton Crescent provided to Dewhurst Developments a letter of non-objection to the proposed 960 Fowl Bay project as revised. We support the heritage designation and the heritage revitalization bylaws, number 4703 and 4704, and will trust that the bylaws will be enforced. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Wendy Cornoch and I live at 995 Brighton Crescent with my husband. And we are, as Lauren, we are both taxpayers to Oak Bay and Victoria and are registered to vote in both. Our house is adjacent to the property at 960 and we are actually adjacent to the proposed lot one. So, I thank you for this opportunity to speak. We do appreciate the steps that Mr. Dewhurst has taken in the revisions of his original submission to council, reducing the lots from five to four. We do still, however, have concerns about the proposed plan as submitted. And during this meeting, we'd like to ask the developer and council to address a few points. Point number one in regards to the bylaw and relaxing of the parking and covered parking spaces. Currently, Brighton Street doesn't allow for on-the-street parking. The street itself is very narrow. It's between 16 and 18 feet wide. It's hard to tell from the plans and it's hard to know when Mr. Dewhurst is talking about improved parking. I'd like to know where that parking is going to go on a street that's only 16 to 18 feet wide. The street's only one block long and intersects with the main road of Fowl Bay. Where there is a crosswalk, where people... Where there is a crosswalk, where people turn, it is a very busy street. I'd like council to consider five spots, relaxing from south, well, basically 11, because we're taking away the four covered spots, and going to five spots if that's actually enough spots for a home of the size of the heritage home, with two two-bedroom suites and one large family home, which, depending on what the rooms are used for, could in fact be up to seven bedrooms. And is it possible that more parking could be required, and where would that parking go? Currently, the home has a large front circular driveway, and the tenants in the house are parking their cars there, and we have noticed upwards from 10 to 12 cars parked there. Point number two, the proposed plan calls for the single-family home with two two-bedroom suites, and we're just wondering why there wasn't consideration for a strata or condo that may effectively provide some regulations within the home itself, rather than one homeowner who's already allowed to have two two-bedroom suites, possibly using the home for something other than the single-family home that it is intended to be used for. I mean, things like Airbnbs are coming into the neighborhood. Conceivably, that kind of use could be, and how do we monitor it? How do we regulate it? And there's currently, right now, an upstairs attic suite. And could that be a further suite down the road if we're already going into the two bedroom suites? And then, point number three, taking a look at our Oak Bay official community plan and relaxing the minimum lot size by the bylaw for the new homes. It's a large document, and it does address the need for higher density in the neighborhood, but I don't see where it promotes increased density with homes of the size that are being proposed. Now, Mr. Dewhurst has said that these are going to be modest-sized homes, but he hasn't stated the size of the homes proposed, and I'm really curious as to what that is. From my understanding and from previous discussions, I've been told that the homes are going to be about 2,400 square feet plus basement, so conceivably 3,600 square-foot homes, and this isn't the size of the homes in the area now. For comparison, our home has a total of 2,076 square feet, 1,837 on the main, with a basement of 239 square feet. Our neighbors at 985 Brighton Crescent, their home is 1,937 square feet, 1,437 on the main, and 500 in the basement. Seems that our neighbors at 980 Brighton Avenue have the largest home, and it is a straight up and down, so it's 2,600 square feet, 1,400 on the main, and 1,200 in the basement. But all of those are considerably less than a 3,600 square-foot house. The document posted on the Oak Bay Municipal website also states that the Oak Bay's official community plan helps guide decisions by council and consider applications for development, and it will guide the decisions of private landowners, developers, and other authorities. So, and I know that a lot of you in the council had input and listened to and put together that plan, and I know that that was a lot of work. One of the comments that I noticed was this statement, I have already put it on a previous submission, but I think it's important. It says that "Many poignant comments were provided during the OCP process by older residents who would like to age in place and remain in their neighborhoods, ideally in their properties. These residents fear an inevitable need to move elsewhere because there are no housing options that would be suitable for them in later years. These residents indicated that they no longer wish to live in large family-sized houses as they age for a variety of reasons. Many also do not wish to move into a multi-unit residential complex, nor do they see duplexes, secondary suites, or putting an elevator into their existing house as suitable options. Residents indicated that they would ideally want smaller one-level houses on a lot with a small private garden." When we take a look at the lots as going in with the size of the homes going in, and taking, and, geez, sorry, and requesting bylaws that change the minimum lot size and reduce them, I'm thinking it also would be a nice opportunity to look at the homes that are going onto the lot, and look at the official community plan and guiding, and is it 3,600 square-foot homes that we need on those lots? And lastly, personally, we really appreciate the studies that Mr. Dewhurst has undertaken to assure us that no shading or foreshadowing will happen with the addition of the house on Lot 1. But we also hope that he will consider that of concern to us is not just the loss of foreshadowing, but our view. Currently, you look out of our window, and we're backing into a house, and the way that the house was built, you, all of the windows on the backside of the house where most of our living is, we look at trees, we look at sky. I actually, when the new house is built and proposed to be about 25 feet high, what we'll look out of our windows at is a house. We won't see sun, we won't see sky, and if the new home on Lot 1 was moved back in the lot just a bit, we could see and have a view from the window in our kitchen. I have a picture that I will share with council. I'm sorry, I don't have a slot at the projections, but it shows the view currently out of our window in our, at the back of our house, out of our kitchen, and it also shows a five-foot fence. So, if you take, and we're talking the setbacks, I think Stacy mentioned 22 feet, you take this fence and add four times, this is the fence. Four times the fence goes up past the sky. We don't see anything but house with the development that the way that it is. This is the rock in the back of our yard, and that's where the house starts. So, if the house was moved back and centered in the Lot 1, we'd have this much view. So, it's not part of the document, but I will submit it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay, call a second time for speakers. I call a third time for speakers. Seeing none. I'm just going to see if Mr. Dewhurst wants to, and it's really, it's optional, address some of those questions that were raised, give the applicant a chance to reply, so
Thank you. All of those points, I've had the opportunity to meet with Wendy and Dave a number of times, and I've heard those concerns, and I think when we look at the efforts that we've made to accommodate those concerns, whether real or perceived, I think it says a lot about our desire to ensure buy-in by everybody. There's only so much you can do at the end of the day. I think the sunshade study speaks for itself. You know, when you have a house that's 40 feet away and it's 22 feet high to the gutters, you know, we're not looking at a wall, we're not going to lose our light, we're not going to not see the sky. And I'm hoping that at the end of the day, when the project is done, that Wendy and Dave will come through the homes, and in fact, this home in particular is one that I'm considering for myself, and I hope at the end of the day, they like the project, it's a, they see the benefits of the redevelopment, they see the quality of the work that I do, and I hope that we become friends, because we are going to be neighbors potentially.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dewhurst. Just out of sense of precaution, does anyone want to speak again? Okay, thank you very much. And now, I'm going to call for an adjournment of this, just so you know, this bylaw will be brought up shortly after 7:00, when we have a council meeting. Thank you very much.
Move/turn to the public hearing?
Move/seconded, discussion. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much, and we'll see some, if not all of you, it's 21 minutes. Thank you.